Thank you. We will open the meeting for March 10th, 2025. Please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is in place. United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I bring in the first candidate?
Hello.
How's everybody doing today?
Sit down, relax, much as you can.
No pressure.
Do I have to do anything with the mic?
No, please don't.
Don't touch the mic.
And that'll be the quickest interview you ever went.
So, John, thank you very much for coming. Thank you for your interest in the Fire Chief's job in the town of East Bridgewater. We have a series of questions to ask you over the next 20 minutes. We want you to answer them completely but succinctly. So if you can answer them in just a few words, that's acceptable. But we want you to answer them fully also.
Okay.
If time allows, there may be an additional question from the Board at the end. But I'll make sure you only have about 20 minutes. So don't procrastinate on the first question, or we won't get to the second one.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. So I'd like to start the process with you telling us a little bit about yourself. Why the town of East Bridgewater and the East Bridgewater Fire Department is a good professional fit for you.
So, I started as a firefighter in upstate New York while I was going to college. I went to St. Lawrence University. I played football. It's known as a hockey school. There's a reason it's not known for its football school. I loved the environment of the team, and I thought what better area to be in a team than with firefighters. So I volunteered while I was going there, got my paramedic, moved down to Cape, and the rest is history. I became firefighter/paramedic as a call firefighter for town of Brewster and then the Kattuitt Fire District, where I've been a professional firefighter for 19 years now, hence the gray hairs. I believe in the mission, vision, and values of the organization. I think I can bring that to East Bridgewater. I have been a shift commander for almost eight years now, nine years now, and I love what I do.
Good. What would you say your leadership style is, and why have you chosen that style?
I refer to myself as an adaptive servant leader. You have to be adaptive in the fire service. You have to adapt and overcome many obstacles. But as terms of leadership styles, I think servant leader serves me best because I'm able to coach and mentor the people that work for me, the guys on my shifts, the guys outside of my shifts, the call firefighters that have been a part of our organization. But at the same time, you also need to be adaptive. So you can't be just a servant leader. You need to be autocratic when you're on a fire scene. You need to be humble. You need to be a transformational leader, and you need to be democratic, especially around the dinner table and dinnertime with what everybody wants to eat.
In a few words, if you had to list one thing you stand for as a leader, what would that be?
Character. Character. My character is a reflection of my core values, and my core values are a reflection of the culture I want to instill in my department and the men and women I lead, and they lead me, and I work for them. I think it's important to be humble, engaging, direct, servant, to lead with integrity and honor. I fully embrace those values, and I lead my life by them.
Okay. What advantages do you see having an open and collaborative relationship with other departments in the community and outside agencies?
So I think all stakeholders, external, internal, you have to be collaborative. We do a very good job of that at the Kattuitt Fire District because we are a district, not a town. We are a smaller district. We have a shared resource of an ambulance that we share with the town of Sandwich. Chief Burke is a great guy and a mentor, as well as my current chief, Sean Brown, and we have a fantastic working relationship with them. We participate in intermunicipal agreements. I have had the experience of that. We utilize the Barnes-- we have at our station a trailer for forest fires that we utilize all over the Cape in agreement with Barnstable County, and we use that shared ambulance with Sandwich. So if they need it, they come and take it. We utilize it the rest of the time. It's a fantastic agreement between the both of us. They have four ambulances. If two go down, they come and take ours, our second ambulance. We have a primary, and then it's our backup. So utilizing shared resources, especially in the economy we're in, the questions on the grant funding in the future, I think shared county resources are going to be paramount to keeping a fully staffed and well-equipped department.
What experience have you had in budget creation and budget management?
So, we, our previous chief, he decided he was going to leave the department. At the same time, our deputy had to go out 111F. We hired an interim chief, Mike Small, Chief Small, and then we hired Sean Brown. While Sean Brown was chief, our deputy was still going out 111F. So he allowed myself and another captain to step into the deputy chief role in terms of budgeting, payroll, grant writing, all of this stuff. We both went for the deputy chief. I did not get the deputy chief in Kattuitt. My good friend Shane did. He's now the deputy chief. I still help with all aspects if necessary, and I believe budget is paramount importance. So having that working background knowledge of budgeting process and the ability to know how to do it, where to do it, when to do it, payroll, I know that you guys are a town, we're a district, we have to do everything. The only person we have is a treasurer, so we're almost human resources as well. So I've had a knowledge of all these things in my career, and still, I'm still writing grants. We won a grant for a Lucas. We have put in, I have put in for the AFG grant for a fire engine, three years in a row. It doesn't look like it's going to happen this year. I know you guys have the SAFER grant for staffing. I think grants are fundamental to what we do. Hopefully, they're still there in the future.
And John, a Lucas machine is?
Oh, CPR machine device for people in the back of the ambulance that require CPR. It frees up the people in the back to do other things and really assists with safety of our personnel. If that machine can be going down the road and somebody's not bending over, trying to do CPR on someone, God forbid in an accident, then we're keeping the people we work for safer. I think it's paramount. I don't know how, in modern day and age, with the equipment that we carry and the lack of personnel we have, we don't have them on every ambulance.
Okay. So you talked about the importance of having equipment, apparatus, and what have you.
Yes, sir.
What do you see the need of having a multi-year capital plan for the Fire Department?
It's essential. Hundred percent. You have to know what's getting towards end of life. You have to know what your staffing levels should be. You have to know what's coming down the road. You have to, the MBTA communities, I know you don't have a station, but you're an adjacent community, and that town, if they're gonna, if you have to be forced into doing it, then the multifamily homes are going to increase the population, they're going to increase our responses, they're going to increase everything we do. So having that in the back of your head when you're mapping out a one, three, five, and 10-year plan, which I've been a part of, I think is paramount, I like that word, paramount to everything we do, so we know what's coming down the road. We have to be able to foretell that because if we aren't trying to be better, then we're complacent, and complacency kills in the fire service.
Okay. What's your experience in fire prevention and code enforcement?
So I am a fire prevention officer, too. I assist my department in all aspects of that. Tomorrow, I actually have, we don't have a ton of commercial space. Tomorrow, I have an appointment on the books in a neighboring district with other fire prevention officers. I always try and strive to be better. I go to the FPAM, Fire Prevention Association of Massachusetts, conferences to be better. I did a little bit of digging. I know that the middle high school recently, not recently, a couple of years ago, got a bidirectional amplifier. I think that's fantastic. I think fire prevention and community risk reduction are the cornerstones of the future for the Fire Department.
Okay. What's your experience with fire-based EMS?
It's all I've known. Even in my volunteer Fire Department, we had ambulances. I've been a paramedic since 2004. I've been advanced EMT, critical care in New York before that. There's really not much difference. I've been doing that for decades now. I think we are better able to serve our customers on a local level by offering the fire-based EMS. I think it, we maintain control of our EMS service to the community in a better way, and we have the men and women that are awesome, for lack of a better word, to be able to provide this service. And it gives us a good entrance into the community. I know as an officer, on an EMS call, I look around at smoke alarms and CO alarms and see what they have. I am constantly looking, I'm taking the 3,000-foot view as opposed to the five-foot view of that patient and seeing what threats there are to both the customer and the people that I work for.
Okay. You talked a little bit about writing grants and obtaining grants. You filed for an AFG for an engine.
Yes, sir.
Those are difficult to get.
They are very difficult to get.
Have you applied for any other grant, any other AFG or SAFER grants?
No other, we've been trying for this engine. We really haven't done many grants until Chief Brown came in. The only other grant we had was the Comiers Grant, which I, since I run the communication for the department, I had a hand in that. So down on Cape, we use an 800 system trunked state police. They're getting ready to switch over to P-25. So we had to upgrade all of our radios, so that was part of this grant through the Commonwealth. So trying to get Commonwealth and Motorola on the same page and us. I don't know if you've ever had to deal with Motorola. They're a big company.
So John, P-25?
P-25 is a, it's a type of system, for lack of a better, for what the state police are going to be going to, digital, basically, digital radio communications, where analog 800 trunked down there right now.
Okay. East Bridgewater Fire does not have a full-time training officer? Training always seems to be an issue in the department. You spend so much time, you know, running out the door, it's very difficult to train. How would you ensure proper and meaningful in-service training could be achieved at East Bridgewater Fire?
So in-service, I'll tackle that in two seconds. I think one of the resources that is amazing here in East Bridgewater is a Massachusetts Fire Academy that's investing millions of dollars in infrastructure just down the street. It would be criminal not to take advantage of that. In training, my chief demands we do two hours of in-service training every single shift. So on my normal shifts, that would be four hours. It can be anything from going and climbing ladders, to pre-planning buildings, to EMS protocol update, to, my most creative was watching an episode of Band of Brothers when it was super cold out and very icy, and I didn't see the risk necessary to go out and throw ladders or pull hose. So creative training is what we need to be doing. People that don't train should be held criminally responsible for not preparing the people they work for, for whatever life may throw at them. You don't have a training officer now. That is something I would look into in my three- or five-year plan to talk to you about and see how we could manage that.
And in the meantime, how would you create the training program that each group would follow?
So I, we don't have a full-time training officer, but we do have a training officer here in East Bridgewater, from what I understand. I would talk to them and solicit buy-in from all groups and all people in the department as to how to do a better job of training and what they would like to see for training in my first 90 days. In my first six months, I would try to implement those changes just in terms of what they want to do for training, and then in my one-year mark, implement a standard of training for the department and put out SOG regarding training on duty.
Okay. Recruitment and retention's been, you know, an issue statewide, nationwide.
Absolutely.
And it's no different here. You know, East Bridgewater becomes a training ground, and they go to somewhere else where they're paying them a little bit more money. How would you, and you know, money is always an issue, so you just can't throw money at it, but, so what other ways would you do to help with the retention?
Build an organizational culture. We are not the highest-paid Fire Department down on Cape Cod. We are part of a organization that is, has a just culture. It has a culture of training. It has a culture of belonging. We recently hired a firefighter from a neighboring department who was paid more at the neighboring department to come over to our department because of our culture. You build that in. People don't want to belong to a Fire Department. They want to belong to an organization, an ideal, something that separates them. You want to instill that within the ranks and file and the leadership of the organization that we're always going to have problems, people are always going to leave, but I want to see people leave for growth opportunities outside of the department. I want to be a leader where people want to come to this department and the organization and the culture so that they leave to be a chief somewhere else and not because they're dissatisfied with the leadership of the organization.
Okay. John, this is a situational question.
Sure.
And you only need to share one, but share a professional experience you had with a difficult employee that you supervised. How did you handle it, and what was the outcome for the employee and the department?
So I have a, on my shift, I have an employee that was difficult when he first started. He was negative, and he would always argue. And what I learned is you can't, you can't argue emotion with data, right? You have to be able to hear them out, to listen, to find out what's really going on, revisit this, come back and revisit them, and talk. And by soliciting buy-in from this individual, he's made a complete 180. He's probably the best member on the department. He is a fantastic paramedic and firefighter. I would recruit him here in a heartbeat if I could, but his family's on Cape, so.
So if I just called the chief, what kind of employee would he say you were?
Dedicated, hardworking, approachable, honest, and really funny with dad jokes.
So we have a few minutes before we'll open up the board, but, so we've had many interested and extremely well-qualified candidates apply for this job, yourself being one of those. Why should the town of East Bridgewater hire you as their next Fire Chief?
Because you're not hiring just a Fire Chief, you're hiring an emergency medical, sorry, emergency management director and a forest warden. I have experience with the Barnstable County Incident Management Team. I am a rostered member of there. I'm going through the basic academy right now. I have a class coming up, and I'll be doing, and I'm just waiting on that fifth class. I hope to get the emergency manager associate coming up. I've already taken the classes for that. It's just a matter of becoming an emergency manager and getting that qualification, and then going for my professional one as well. I am a logistics, I'm sure you have my resume, I'm a logistics section chief, an ops section chief, a finance section chief. I've taken those classes. It requires a little bit more to actually become one, but I'm working in those capacities on the Barnstable County Incident Management Team.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Absolutely.
That's all the questions I have. Open it up to the board.
I just have one, John. What is the retention rate down in Kattuitt now?
We haven't had to hire somebody that wasn't academy-qualified and a paramedic in 15 years.
Carol?
Sure. You had said that you would build an organizational culture, that that's how you would keep people to stay.
Yes.
Can you give me an example of what that would look like to you?
It would be, easiest way I can describe it is being able to talk to the people I work for as a chief and figuring out what their wants and needs are. I bring talents, abilities, skills, and knowledge. I need to figure out their talents, abilities, skills, and knowledge, and what they want within this department, what they crave, what they haven't had before, what I can bring to them to get buy-in. As I said before, buy-in is the most important thing from the people I work for.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
First of all, thanks for applying for the job.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. You did touch on, one of the things I was most interested in is the emergency management stuff, so it's good to hear that. My question comes more probably directed towards this town, East Bridgewater. Currently, we're at a very old station over here, in a police station that's basically in a basement. So we have been talking about, we have a committee formed for a new safety building, which I, you know, I really like to see happen. But what you'll find in East Bridgewater is, you know, it's not us that make that decision. I guess most towns, it's the people out there. Any experience you could share with what your involvement's been with the community? You know, things that you've been involved with outside of the fire station, because I think that's important in order to pass your agenda.
Absolutely. First, let me start by saying my wife is from Bridgewater. My in-laws still live in Bridgewater. That is where, if I'm hired, I will be six miles away as we get ready to sell my house and come here. I think I've been keeping up on that. I know the, last agenda I found on the website was from the summer on the committee. We are actually in the process of building a new station in Kattuitt. This May will be our true test. We got approval for 1.6 million this past district meeting, and we're going for 18 million, I believe, is the final total, not entirely, it's 16 to 18 million. It involves our current station, putting up a brand-new station next to it, and revamping the current station to make five bays out front. If you have any questions about it, you can look up the Kattuitt Fire Station. It's all online. My chief is wonderful, has let us be a part of the process the entire way. I think the best way to get buy-in from our external stakeholders is by inviting them into our current station and opening it up and letting them see what we do and letting them see what we have to work with. And there will never be 100% agreement on anything, but we, if we expand what we do with our community risk reduction, I know you guys do a ton already, but that's where my passion lies, and I have a lot of ideas on community risk reduction. We go out into the community, we create that buy-in, we get the external stakeholders on board, and we, it becomes that much easier to explain why we need this. We have to have data. We have to show that there's a true and honest need for a joint public safety station, which it shouldn't be that hard, based on everything I've read and seen. You have to show, it's ultimately up to the people that we work for, whether or not they're going to fund it, but we have to put our best foot forward and explain and rationalize why we need that station. If we just say we need the station because the old one's old, that doesn't do anything for anybody. That leads to more questions and not good answers if we don't have the data to support it. So we have to have the data, and we have to have this facts, and we have to have the talking points. And I can lean on my current chief to help if I have any questions, because he is awesome.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you again for your interest in the position and for what you do for the town of Kattuitt and the Commonwealth, and I wish you the best.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate everything. Thank you very much.
I have good night.
I'm just going to ask you to sit here for a while.
Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Levin, thank you for coming. Thank you for your interest in the East Bridgewater Fire Chief's position. And I have a series of questions to ask you over the next 20 minutes.
Yep.
We want you to answer them completely but succinctly, so if you can answer them in a few words, that's good, but, you know, feel free to answer them completely. But if you spend all your time on the first question, we won't get to the other 10 or 18, so. And then when we're done with 20 minutes, if time allows, we'll have the select board. I may have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
Okay. So I'd like you to start the process by telling us a little bit about yourself, why the East Bridgewater Fire Department and the town of East Bridgewater is a good professional fit for you.
Sure. My name is Charles Anna, go by Chuck. I've been a firefighter for 30 years now, which is hard to believe. 25 years professional service with the town of Franklin. In my capacity, in Franklin, I've risen through the ranks to the rank Battalion Chief at this time. And during that time, I've spent no, I've wasted no time in trying to better myself and better the organization that I work for. I've spent a lot of time, you know, going to school, taking classes, things like that. And I have really invested a lot in community relationships, and I think that's been my strongest suit with Franklin. In the past five or six years, Franklin has done quite a lot of investment, and I've been a big part in that, a big part in growth in the department. I think that I bring that aspect to any job that I would do.
Okay. What would you say your leadership style is, and why have you adopted that leadership style?
I think I have a friendly leadership style because I think that it allows people to have good communication with me. I think that's extremely important. Communication is the key to everything. If there's a problem that I need to deal with, I need to be able to have that open dialogue with people that I work for and people that work for me. And I think that that's been probably my key to my leadership style.
Okay. In a few words, if you had to list one thing you stand for as a leader, what would that be?
Accountability.
What advantages do you see having an open and collaborative relationship with other departments within the community and outside agencies?
I think that is, that is everything that a Fire Department is. I think a Fire Department works with every department in the community. In order to be a successful organization, you have to, you have to be a part of everything. I mean, it's, you know, code enforcement.
In a few words, if you had to list one thing you stand for as a leader, what would that be?
Accountability.
What advantages do you see having an open and collaborative relationship with other departments within the community and outside agencies?
I think that is, that is everything that a fire department is. I think a fire department works with every department in the community. In order to be a successful organization, you have to, you have to be a part of everything. I mean, it's, you know, code enforcement, you know, infrastructure in the community. I think that having that relationship and communications is paramount to a successful fire department.
What experience have you had with budget creation and budget management?
I've had a bit, not as much as I'd like, but I have had a bit of experience with it. At my current organization, I am the head of residential fire prevention. So anything that goes along with that and some community risk reduction, we've done quite a bit of that. In my capacity as a battalion chief, we, we meet collaboratively with the budget. So we go over it together as a group every year. So I do have, have a little bit of interaction with that process.
Equipment is paramount in the, in the fire department, you know, and it's very unique with the apparatus that we have. How important do you think a multi-year capital plan or capital budget is for the fire department?
It's extremely important. I think you have to plan for apparatus to time out, really. And not just apparatus, I mean, even just any equipment you have in, in the organization. Firefighter turn-on gear, even ballistic vests, something we're going through right now at my current organization. You need to have a plan and you need to look forward, I think, five, 10 years down the road and see where, see where you want to be. A fire truck right now, if you're going to replace an apparatus, is over a million dollars to buy an equipment for a pumper. That's not something any community can afford tomorrow. You need to have a, a good capital plan in place to note, so that you can express the needs of your organization to the community, so that, that's planned for.
Okay, you said plan out. How far do you think a capital plan for a fire department should be planned out?
I think, I think at least, at least five years is a good, is a good plan. But if you're talking about planning for apparatus, I think specifically, I think apparatus should be planned out. At least, you know, you should know a 10-year timeline of what, what you're going to need to do.
What experience have you had in fire prevention and code enforcement?
Quite a bit. I, like I said, I'm, right now, I'm the chief in charge of residential fire prevention. We have a deputy in charge of commercial fire prevention, so we work hand-in-hand a lot with that. I am the sole person responsible for our residential plan review. And with that, we work very closely with the building department. So we do all residential solar systems, everything, everything that's put into the town that has anything to do with us with code enforcement, you know, ESS systems for, you know, battery backup, things like that. We, that goes through us. So I have quite a bit of experience with that.
What experience have you had with fire B H D M S?
A lot. I've been a paramedic. I got my E M T. in 1994 and I have been a paramedic since 98. I've worked, I worked as a line paramedic for a long time. Even up until just a few years ago, I worked for a, a private service, just part-time to kind of, once I be, once I got promoted, you don't do as much as ambulance workers probably want to. So I, I worked at a, at a private service that was strictly 911 as well. But for any, any fire department, that is, especially, and I can speak to the organization I work for now, that the revenue that's created from that stream of that service and the outreach it does for the community, especially just, you know, going through, through COVID, through the pandemic and everything, that, it's, it's extremely important. But I do have a lot of experience with fire B H D M S.
So Franklin runs an ALS?
We do. We run, we, right now, we run two full-time and one part-time. We have a, a, an ambulance that runs in conjunction with a EMS captain, which is an administrative position. So when that person isn't in the office, third ambulance call comes in, we try and capture that. Truthfully, it, it needs to be 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's just not financially sustainable at the time, right now. Franklin brings in a revenue, this year, we're probably looking at about 2.4 million. So it's, it's quite a bit, quite a bit of dollars that come through there. We're very proactive where we are, where we, we go after a lot of, we go after C P money. That's, that's another thing, you know, losses from Medicaid, Medicaid. A lot of communities don't go after that. For Franklin, the past couple of years, it's been, I think last year was 180,000. Those things add up, so that's, you know, yeah.
Have you had any experience in writing and obtaining grants?
Yes, extensively, actually. That is a, a big part of the organization that I'm in now. We aggressively go after grants. In the past, past five years, we've received 1.9 million, just shy of $2 million in A F G grants. And those are everything from equipment to, to training. In fact, we had a training exercise today, a man versus machine, and that was 100% paid for by grant money.
Okay, what other A F G grants have you had?
We've done, we do a lot for training. So we have, we have a ladder training one coming up. We have done two different RIT programs. In fact, we actually wrote a grant that the program didn't exist and we had to go to the fire academy and ask them to make it. So we were a little bit, little bit too creative with the grant for like an advanced technical rescue, you know, RIT program. But we do, we've, we've been successful with that. We've also been pretty successful with regional grants. We just received, this past year, we replaced all of our portable radios between us and our neighboring community in Norfolk. And that grant was worth, for us, it was $684,000.
So it's a regional grant?
A regional grant, yeah. I don't know how much longer those will be around, but we hope.
Did, did you write the narrative or have contributed?
I have written, I have written complete narratives for grants. We, we work collaboratively. I think that's extremely important because I don't think it should just be one person that does it. I think you should have people throughout the rank and file department. And in the current organization I work for, we do it based on, we have, we have firefighters, lieutenants, captains, you know, you know, battalion chiefs, deputies. We try and get a little, little committee together, find out what we believe is important for the organization and then we attack it in that fashion. Everybody takes a piece of it and then we, it's usually a tight timeline to get the grant in, but we, we, we look at it together and then we, we fix things that need to be done. And we've been, we've been very successful with it. About three years ago, I wrote a grant personally, myself. I'm also the, the fire investigator for the, for the community. So I wrote a grant for some 360 camera software to be able to, to use that. We've been able to use it for pre-plan as well, which has been, which has been pretty nice. But that I did, did on my own and that was about a $10,000 grant.
Share it with the police, through the schools?
I tried. I tried. They want, they want, they want their, you know, it's, it's funny because the, the, the cameras, it's, it's a company called Eltron. It's a 360 camera. It's predominantly used for police investigation. It's for crash scene reconstruction because it works so well. But for the fire service, it works great. We can, we can walk into a building and, you know, walk in the lobby here and take a couple of pictures and then if we go back to there for an incident, we can pull it up on a tablet and say, okay, we can actually walk through the place and say, what are, what are we dealing with here? We do the same thing for, you know, fire investigation. You might miss something and then you, you come back and look at it and you get back to the office, you're like, oh yeah, this, this, there was the cause right there. And it's, it's, it's been, it's been pretty helpful for us, so.
Very good. So East Bridgewater Fire does not have a full-time training officer. You talked a lot about training. We know how important it is in the fire service. And it always seems to be lacking, especially in smaller departments where you can't take companies out of service. You know, they're running out on ambulance calls all day, so it's very difficult to train during the day. So how would, just thoughts, I know it, you're just, you know, off the top of your head, but how would you introduce a good training program for East, East Bridgewater?
I, I think, I think you have to have someone who's a point person for, for the task. And I think it should be someone of, of an officer rank, lieutenant or captain or something like that. In my experience, we've, we've used stipend positions where someone, it's, that's, that's their, that's their goal or collateral duty of a position. That's pretty popular where we are. It's, it's worked really well. For instance, as a battalion chief, my collateral duty is fire prevention and fire investigation. We have four battalion chiefs. One of them is, is, you know, station equipment and maintenance. One of them is training. So that is, I think that that would be the best way to attack that is to put someone as a point person in it. And then if, if there's no budget allows to be able to do, you know, training off-duty, you have to make do with what you can. There's, not everything is hands-on. There are things that you can do that are not hands-on. And I, I think you can take every opportunity that you can find to expose the employees to, to, to everything you can, you know, comfortably do, so.
What, some of the non-handson stuff?
There's a lot of virtual training you can do. We do, we do a lot of stuff, even with DFS, there's, there's a lot of things that you can just, you could just sit down in front of a, in front of the computer and take a half-hour class, you know, in, in awareness, you know, stuff like that. Those things are available. And I would encourage people to do that and I, I would expect that, that those things are done. And I think if you put a point person in charge of that and then they keep track of that training every month, you can kind of see where people lack and where they don't. As you know, an I S O rating, Franklin's an I S O one department. They weren't, I know I mentioned that in the assessment. They're not born that way. They're no department is. I think a lot of that for us was a collaborative effort with the, the water department and the infrastructure in the community. But to raise that rate, a huge part of it is, is training. You have to have a robust training program. And, and even in Franklin, there's not, there's not money to, to spend to go, to go do that all the time. You can't take people out of service all the time. But it's expected that as you're on shift, when you get downtime, you're out there, you're out there doing something. If it's, if it's, even if it's just hands-on, open the fire truck, look at the cabinets, you know, touch the tools. You'd be surprised how many times you go to a call and you go, where's the angle, I don't know, cabinets and, you know, you gotta know. And that's, and it's important. So I think that, if that answers the question.
How many I S O one departments are there in Massachusetts?
I want to say there was six, I think, four or five. It's Austin, Foxborough, New Bedford.
Cambridge.
Cambridge, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thanks, yeah.
What does that mean?
I S O one is the insurance rating system. So what they, you have the best insurance rating that you can possibly.
You're, you're basically, you're evaluated by this agency for your, it's, it's infrastructure for water delivery, hydrants, water mains, flow rates, stuff like that plays a big piece into it. And also your training, training records, you have to have, you have to meet a certain minimum standard requirement. Then your response times and then distance traveled to, from, from the fire station to, to the, to the call, so. It has, it plays a lot. Even with, even with us, you know, Foxborough, Foxborough is a newly-minted I S O one department. Franklin is as well. We do have some pretty significant response times. The metrics, the way that it plays out, you may not, you may really lack in one area, but you've made it up for another one, training and, and, you know, infrastructure and you, I S O rating increases. But it's evaluated every, technically every five years, so.
Goes from one to 10. I think you probably have four or five here. Retention, recruiting retention of firefighters is very difficult. It's difficult here, especially with firefighters and paramedics. They seem to come here, cut their teeth, go to the fire academy and then move to another department. How, how would you work on improving the retention rate?
I, I've been a big part of that in my current organization. And I've also been a big part of the hiring process. So in the past, we've had a lot of retirements in the past, probably, I want to say five or six years, we've probably, maybe a little longer than that. We've probably hired 30, 30-plus firefighters. We've seen a few leave and that's to be expected every once in a while. Someone wants a different opportunity. But what we've been able to do in our organization is create, is create some worth for the department. I don't think it's strictly about the contract. Certainly that plays a piece of it, what, what, you know, the employees' wages and benefits are. They're always looking for the best. But they want to be someplace where they belong, someplace that they're proud of. I think that that plays a big piece in someone's, their, their joy of the job. And I think if you give people opportunity and they see opportunity, from the time someone comes in the door, they can see themselves in the seat of the fire chief someday. I think they're going to want to stick around that organization, you know, a lot longer rather than, than, you know, come and go.
Is this a situational question? You only have to come up with one situation. Share a professional experience you've had with a difficult employee that you supervise. How did you handle it and what was the outcome for the employee and the department?
So I had a, I, I can explain this very well. So I had a employee that actually worked for me and he made a complaint about another captain that I worked with. That employee didn't make that complaint directly to me. He made it to a lieutenant. He, he made a complaint about that officer pulling a woman's ponytail. And that resulted in a very large investigation into the situation, as it should have. But I had that employee document everything and that officer that he spoke to document everything. And luckily, the, the situation had a good resolution, but it was a very stressful time for the fire department. But in that, that aspect, that employee was 100% correct to, to have that concern. And I think that the documentation of the, of what the experience was, was paramount to how it, how the outcome came out, so.
If I was to call your chief, what type of employee would he say you were?
Say I'm a great employee. We get along great. We get along great. I gotta tell you. But when he, when he came, my experience isn't just with, as being a fire officer. I was also on the union side for a very long time and saw Franklin through some really tough times and stuff that was probably on the news. But that experience, being on that side of the table, made me a better employee. It made me a better manager, made me a better leader. And it made me understand the people that now work for me as I came through the ranks. It was very important. And he came from an outside department. He came from the city of Warwick. He's been there about all six years, this July. We worked collaborative together to better the organization and it was a union and department effort. And we, we, we have a great relationship. He's, he's a great, great guy.
So we've had many interested and extremely well-qualified and experienced candidates apply for this job, you being one of those. Why should the town of East Bridgewater hire you as their next fire chief?
I think, I think I bring, I think I bring fresh ideas to an organization. I think, I don't know how long the chief was here, but before he was probably here a long time, I probably came through the ranks. I think I would, I, my demeanor and how I, I handle people, I think is a, is a plus. I think that I would, I'd be good for the community. I'd be good for the organization. I'm the type of person that, and I have in the past, built very good relationships. I'm, I have very good relationships with the, the city council where I currently work. I consider them all very good friends, have good relationships with our state representative, with all the firefighters in, in the community. I work very well with other departments. You know, as you know, the fire department works closely with the building department. The building commissioner and I are very good friends in Franklin and I, I think that I would bring that to this organization. I think I'd bring consistency and a positive attitude to the town of East Bridgewater.
About six or seven minutes?
You talked about some fresh ideas that you would bring into the town of East Bridgewater. Could you have that?
I don't know how, how the department is now. I mean, I've been asked a lot of questions about, you know, about grants and about funding and maybe even about people that don't want to, you know, maybe, maybe come and go, if that's been something that's happened in the past. I think helping folks find their self, their self-worth is good. I think that one of the ideas that I would bring is, is, is try and, you know, sit down with everybody in the organization, find out where they feel they stand, where they, what they think of the department and where they think their goals are and get their personal goals. I think that'd help everybody work on that individually and find everybody's strengths and weaknesses and, and make it a better organization. And if we can build on that, if the budget allows us to do that, then yeah. If I have the support from, from you folks to go out and seek A F G grants, even, even private service grants, that grant I spoke about, about the camera, that was through the Society Fire Protection Engineers. That wasn't necessarily through the federal government. So I think if I had the support of you folks, some of those, those require some, some collateral funding, you know, with that stuff. I think that, that would build a good organization. I think that people that are involved in the department are involved in their future, would, would, would build a better fire department, so.
One of the things that has been brought to our attention through this process is that there's some feeling in that department of there's a lot of employees, you know, there are employees that have been there a really long time and then there are these new, and it's been hard to kind of mesh the two. What, what would you do to, to build that team?
I think that everybody has their strengths and weaknesses. And I, like I said, I'd sit down with all of them and find those. I think it's very important to keep the, the younger generation of firefighters are completely different than the older generation of firefighters. They want a whole different.
So I've heard.
They, they don't, they don't like coming to work, I'll tell you that. But, you know, it's, 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 I, I think that building up the mentorship and the worth of those people that have been here is really, really important. I think that as a young firefighter, when I started, you have to find someone to look up to. It, it's a dangerous job. It's a very rewarding job and it's a job that you, you see a lot of the good and bad in society and you need the support of people that you work with. And I think that, I think that's probably, probably the best thing to do is to, is to create a mentorship. So those people that have been here a long time have some worth and what they'll leave when they retire and walk out the door, that this young kid coming in here, he, he's going to take his place eventually. I think that, that's really important. Thank you.
Yeah, Chuck, I like a lot that you're saying. It really resonates, I think, with East Bridgewater and, you know, what we're about. The fire department currently does a real good job in a lot of areas. One of the things I am most proud of what they do is work with the community, especially the schools. I mean, they're, you know, they're fantastic in the programs that they put through there and it goes back to your point about, you know, that younger generation, you know, somebody my age goes in this school, they're like, you know, somebody my age goes in this school, they're like, you know, what's grandpa doing here? Somebody comes in that's just got on the force, you know, I think it's wonderful because they relate in a lot of ways. Have you done any work through, in Franklin, with the school system?
With the SAFE program. Yeah, when I first started, I did CPR instruction with schools with the SAFE program. We have a pretty robust program. We actually just did a Special Olympics polar plunge at Beaver Pond in town with the kids, so.
You're not doing that here.
Yeah, I wouldn't go in.
Forge pond.
Yeah, but that, I've had quite a bit of experience with that. I think that that, it is not even just schools, even with the seniors, the senior center. We do, we do, they have the, that same program puts on a St. Patrick's Day breakfast, where all the firefighters come in, everybody volunteers their time, and they serve breakfast to the seniors. The same thing with the kids, so I think they kind of try and build those generations a little bit together.
You don't ask the seniors to go plunging with you, do you?
No, but you know what, I bet there's a couple that probably would.
They are paramedics. Save it.
Good training.
Any more questions, Chief?
I'm good. Thank you.
You're good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you for what you do in the town of Franklin. Is it a city now, Franklin?
It's a city, but they like the word town.
Thank you for what you do in the city of Franklin.
I heard city council. Yeah.
Yeah, they have nine council members. It's funny, they run, they run just at large throughout the whole town, there's no districts or anything, so.
Is the city called the town of Franklin, or the town called the city of Franklin?
It's the city called the town of Franklin, yeah.
I do a lot of work there, so I should.
Don't ask them about the new logo.
They should know that.
The new town logo, it's been.
But thank you very much for what you do for the city, what you do for the Commonwealth, and your interest in the fire chief's job here.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chad.
Nice to meet you all.
How could you tell? How could you tell?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for coming, thank you for your interest in the East Bridgewater Fire Chief's job. We have a series of questions to ask you over the next 20 minutes. We want you to answer them completely but succinctly. So if you can answer them in a few words, that's fine, but we also want you to answer them completely also. But if you spend, you know, 20 minutes on the first question, we're not going to get to the other 15.
Understood.
At the end, if we have some time, there may be some follow-up questions from the board.
Sure.
Okay. So I'd like you to start the process by telling us a little bit about yourself, why the East Bridgewater Fire Department and the town of East Bridgewater is a good professional fit for you.
Sure. First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today. I really appreciate it to apply for such a position in a wonderful community, a great fire department. My name's Scott McGuire, originally from North Attleboro. I have 16 years of fire service experience. I've, in my career, I've been a qualified firefighter, I've been a volunteer, I've been a volunteer live-in when I was in college, and I've been a career officer, now a shift commander. I applied for this position after, I saw the posting, and I started reaching out to some friends. The fire service, as I'm sure you're well aware, is a very small community, and I heard a lot of great things about this fire department, and a lot of great things about the people who work there and the community. More and more research, and I thought it would be a great fit. A lot of great things going on with this fire department, with this community, and it's a group of people I want to be a part of, that's why I applied. I'm applying to be a member of this community, I want to be a community helper like firefighters are supposed to be. And as I hope you can tell from my resume, I've been preparing for a professional opportunity such as this for a number of years, and I've done everything I can to try to be an asset to a community such as this.
Okay. What would you say your leadership style is, and why have you chosen that leadership style?
My leadership style is based on respectful partnerships. And I say that because it goes across every aspect of a fire chief's job. You're working for a lot of people. You're working for people in the department, you're working for your firefighters and your fire officers. You're trying to make sure that they're well-trained and they're equipped, and that they are heard, and you are working for them. You want to make sure that they're, be able to do their job as safely as possible, and you're trying to provide for their safety in the short term and the long term. We know we're dealing with a lot of different exposures in the fire service that cause health concerns like heart and lung problems and cancer risk. I respect that. You're working for the families of your firefighters and your officers, because you want to return their loved ones home to them as safe as humanly possible, again, in the short term and the long term. Working for the community, you're trying to do hazard risk mitigation, you're responding to emergencies, but you're trying to be a community helper, that's, I love that aspect of the fire service. Public education, working with special needs populations, doing home safety inspections or visits, providing services to the community. When people call, they have a situation, they don't know who to call, they end up calling the fire department, so it's up to us to be ready, willing, and able to do that. And then working for the community, have to have a great relationship with you folks and community groups. I'm an Eagle Scout, so I love working with the local Boy Scouts and Scouting America groups, and the program that you have here to teach young people about the fire service, I love that. Pass the baton to the next generation and turn around and teach them the love of the fire service, it's awesome. I find that having respectful relationships with everybody you work with and for alleviates a lot of problems, and it creates a great positive environment for everybody.
Okay. In a few words, if you had to list one thing you stood for as a leader, what would that be?
Integrity. I say that because I try to lead by example. I don't hold anybody to a higher standard than I do myself. I always do my homework, I put in the effort, I put in the work, and I, nobody will ever be able to turn around and say that I wouldn't put myself in that position. And making sure that I hold the office to the highest esteem possible, and respect the community, respect the department, and respect the people I work with and for.
Okay. What advantages do you see having an open and collaborative relationship with other town departments within the town and outside agencies?
I think it supports whole community response. And in situations where people are dealing with incidents in their homes or businesses, it's incumbent upon us to have a unified front and provide services to our citizens or residents, the visitors to the community. So working with people like the building department, you can speed up the process for plan reviews, provide inspectional services. You can work with, let's say, if you have an incident in a restaurant, you can work with the health department to help expedite the process to opening up the restaurant again, providing support to the members of the community, that's what I see the mission is. Whole community response takes everybody. It's not just the fire department, it's not just the police department, it takes everybody. It's a full effort, and a mentor of mine taught me something many years ago that I hold very close to the chest, and I think that goes back to the whole partnering with other agencies. When things go wrong, or there's an emergency, or there's a situation that presents itself, it's a lot better to say, "How are you?" instead of, "Who are you?" And having those relationships ahead of time just expedites the process across the board. As a member of the FEMA team, I've been deployed to various locations in the country, and I've seen what works, and I've seen what does not work, and I want to bring what works and what I've learned to your fire community here.
Could you expand just a little bit more on the FEMA team?
Oh, sure. I have been a member of the FEMA team for a little over nine years now. I'm currently a planning team manager, so a lot of what we do is maintaining the data of keeping track of our searches and planning for future operations in dynamic situations. Most recently, I was deployed with the team to North Carolina, where I did a lot of work in partnership conjunction as a liaison officer to local emergency operations centers, fire departments, police departments. And a lot of what I saw down there was really inspiring. I was working with county sheriffs, fire chiefs, police chiefs, state lost people close to them who worked for their organizations, and they were still out there doing the work that had to be done. And being able to help them was, I learned a lot, but it also was very inspiring.
Team's based out of Beverly?
Yes, sir, team's based out of Beverly.
What involvement have you had in budget creation and budget management?
In my current role, I currently work for a fire department that very generously let me get into the grants game. So I have been writing the grants for the fire department I'm currently working for for about six or seven years now. I've been fairly successful with it. Our grant revenue, I think, is over, just over $500,000 at this point with projects that we've completed. So with that, I've had to do the budget allocations and the budget planning for the, all the grant projects, and maintaining those grants over time to make sure that we're in a good standing with federal, state, and local partners. So that's been a great education, and some really great experience that I like to bring to the table here. I noticed that this community has a great track record of obtaining grants for the fire department, and I want to keep that going.
So are you talking to state grants or AFG grants?
AFG grants. I see also you have a SAFER grant in this community, that's wonderful. AFG grants is assistance to firefighter grants from FEMA. I've been writing those grants for the fire department I work for, and I've also had the opportunity to go to the National Fire Academy to do peer reviews for other fire departments. And that was an education. Now I have a much better understanding for what the peer reviewers are looking for in grants.
And what were some of the grants you were able to get?
I wrote a grant for new SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus for the firefighters to use on every one of our riding positions, an SCBA filling station as part of our respiratory protection program. I wrote one that, it was in support of the COVID-19 pandemic response for Bristol County and some other fire departments to provide PPE for EMTs and paramedics, and some other projects, but that's the highlights.
Was that the COVID grant you were talking about, was that a regional grant?
It was a regional grant, we were the host agency for it. So I worked with the chief of the department I'm working for now, and coordinating that with the Bristol Fire Chiefs Association.
So equipment and apparatus are very important in the fire service, and very unique also. What importance do you see having a multi-year capital plan for a fire department?
I can't put enough emphasis on planning. These are large expenditures, but they also have a direct correspondence to firefighter safety and the quality of the services that they give the community. It's unfortunate that they cost, you know, it's a lot of money. We're talking ladder trucks that are costing over $2 million, that requires a lot of planning, and we need to be judicious in how we plan for those expenditures, look through grant programs, but we also have to make sure that what we're looking for fits the needs of the community. For me, it goes back to the relationships with the fire officers, the firefighters themselves who are using the equipment on a daily basis. And if you take their input and you apply what is available on the market, you can find something that works for the community and be as efficient as humanly possible. I love planning, it's something I'm passionate about. If you don't have a plan, you've already failed. So it's something I believe very strongly in, and I bring some skill to that arena.
When you're planning for fire apparatus, how far out do you think you have to plan?
Right now, we're looking at delivery from the time you order up to anywhere from 36 to 48 months, depending on the piece of fire apparatus you're looking for. So it requires a much longer lead time than we've been used to in years past. I can remember having, hearing orders going into the factory, and you have the truck within a year. Now that is not the case. The apparatus is getting more expensive, they're getting more complicated with all the electronics, and some of the new technologies that are great, but the lead time is certainly a challenge.
Okay. What experience you've had in fire prevention and code enforcement?
Fire prevention and code enforcement, I've been involved with several projects. In college, I was studying for my Bachelor of Science at the University of New Haven in Fire Administration and arson investigation. I had the pleasure of doing a number of internships with fire marshals, and doing some good projects on some very large-scale plan reviews and doing inspections, and it kind of went along with the fire investigation end of it as well. I'm also credentialed as a Fire Prevention Officer Level One, and I have assisted our Fire Prevention Division where I currently work several times. If you ask the deputy chief on my department that I currently employed with, I find a lot of fire prevention items for follow-up, to try to make these buildings safer for our residents, our community, but also for our firefighters.
Okay. East Bridgewater Fire does not have a full-time training officer? And training, you know, is difficult in any department, especially in the smaller departments, we can't take companies out of service, and, you know, they're running calls all day. How would you institute a training program for the town of East Bridgewater?
I love training. It's fantastic. If, I can't say enough about it. In the fire service, we get thrown into different situations, and it really is true that you don't rise to the occasion, you fall to the level of your training. So a department of this size, the best thing I've found in my experience is working with your officers and your firefighters to figure out what the needs truly are. I love getting out there and training with the firefighters, and I always learn new things too. There are small drills or 20-minute drills. We're getting busier and busier over time with medical calls, fire calls, needs for public assistance, whatever it is. If you can take small bites at a training plan, and make sure that the training is consistent across all four of the groups, I think it has a huge impact on the quality of service that people get, and it makes the job safer for the firefighters. But there has to be input and buy-in from everybody in the organization. If I just came in and said, "Hey, we're doing this," and didn't get any buy-in from the stakeholders, it would not be a successful program.
Okay, retention of firefighters, recruit and retention, very difficult in Massachusetts. We've got firefighter medics, you know, going, taking different jobs and job hopping, and that, it is a concern here in East Bridgewater. How would, and you can't just throw money at everything, and money isn't, you know, the end-all, but how would you work to retain the current firefighter medics that we have?
I think it's about collaborative relationships. I would love to have a great relationship with the collective bargaining unit for the firefighters. Having a regular meeting cadence with their union leadership would be fantastic. Creating a positive environment where people feel like they can contribute something, and they're getting something from it, and they're performing a valuable service, that goes a long way. Firefighters are a special breed, a lot of type A personalities. You have to sometimes tell the firefighters to stop, because if you don't tell them to stop, they'll run through a brick wall for you. And you have to respect that and use that, you know, as a tool. But having buy-in from everybody in the organization and making sure that they have a voice, and being open to, you know, being approachable and having a mutual respect goes a long way. When people feel like they're valued, they'll take less money if they feel valued and they're doing a good job.
Okay. What's your experience working with a five-aged EMS transport system?
Extensive. I've been a firefighter, paramedic, I've been, you know, I've worked the ambulance. I worked metro Boston for a private ambulance company in a former life. In college, I wrote a series of recommendations to a career fire department to begin advanced life support transport services in Connecticut. So I gave a list, I think it was 20 or so recommendations to the Board of Fire Commissioners for them to start their program, and I'm very passionate about it. There's quite the demand out there for it, as we well know, and our paramedics do a great, fantastic job, but it's something I'm very passionate about. Firefighters in today's world, the number of fires are going down, and that's a great thing, because that means that fire prevention's working, it means that our community outreach and public education is working, which is great, but we're seeing more need on the medical side, whether it be car accidents, medical events, and some of our young firefighter paramedics coming in the door now have more opportunities to save a life in the back of an ambulance than they do on the fire scene. And it's a very challenging arena with, they've been on the front lines of the opioid crisis, they've been on the front lines of the pandemic, and they have to stay up with all their current trends in education, it's something I take very seriously. I have a passion for it and love to support it.
So north Attleboro currently offers advanced life support?
Yes, sir, we do.
Scott, this is a situational question. Share professional experience you've had with a difficult employee that you supervise. How you handled it, and what was the outcome for the employee and the department?
I've dealt with several situations that you would consider sensitive, and gathering the facts in a respectful manner, and making sure that you have the facts straightened, only the facts, no conjecture, only the facts, treating everybody with respect. I've dealt with some instances where I've seen people almost taken aback when you treat them in a respectful, calm manner, and they're amped up, they're very stressed out, I get that. When you treat them with respect, it's very fruitful. Providing them training and education and support, and trying to figure out if there's any extenuating circumstances, whether it be professionally or on a personal level, making sure you making sure you have the full picture and how you can support that firefighter, that fire officer, coaching them through whatever challenge they might be going through and providing them some support. And then they say, "Oh, wow, I'm getting some support here, and they're actually listening to me." I've gotten a lot of buy-in and a lot of success stories without getting into too much detail. But mutual respect is huge for me.
Do you have one specific incident you could share with us?
One that I can think of in my career is somebody who was, shall we say, underperforming in training on the fire ground, emergency scenes, not necessarily the performance you were looking for. And part of it was apprehension or a lack of confidence. And if you figured out what was going on, what was driving the challenges with that firefighter's confidence, and then focused on what they didn't feel comfortable with after we addressed some training gaps, became a rock star, absolutely fantastic. And that's kind of one of the best success stories I can think of off the top of my head.
I was to call your chief. What type of employee would you say you were?
Driven, conscientious. I certainly do my homework, that's for sure. I have a passion for the fire service, and I try to make sure that's evident in my work and make sure that I support the people that I work with and for. I would like to think that other people find my relationships with the people I work with and for to be based on respect.
So we've had interest from many extremely well-qualified candidates for this position, you being one of those. Why should the town of East Bridgewater hire you as their next fire chief?
Well, again, thank you very much for the opportunity to apply. I certainly don't envy your decision. There's a lot of great fire service professionals that want to work for you. What I want to bring to the table here is bring my passion for the fire service. I want to be part of your community. I want to be part of your fire department. I'm applying to this position because I want to be here. If you want to make a long-term investment in your next fire chief, I'm your guy. I want to be here for the long term. I want to see this department be very successful on the long term. And I'll turn around and say that I would love to support the professional development of this department. And when it comes time to replace me, I would love to have a candidate from within this fire department that's ready, willing, and able to be your next fire chief.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions. Go ahead. Sure?
Scott, when we asked you about the budget, you gave us some instances of grant writing and stuff like that. How about the every-day, every-year balance and putting together budgets and stuff like that? Can you give us a little background on that?
Sure. I've assisted fire chiefs with certain sections of the budget. So for right now, I'm in charge of our fire investigation unit. So putting together a budget as far as what our training needs are, any equipment, making recommendations to the department and how to do that in an efficient and respectful manner without blowing up the chief's budget. And I also have always tried to pay attention to what's going on around the fire department as well. So understanding the environment we're operating in. I know we're coming into some challenging financial times and being judicious about the requests that we're making. In my current role, I've been very conscientious about that. And I did an internship in college where I assisted with an entire budget, which was quite the eye-opening experience.
I bet. Okay, Carol?
One of the challenges this department faces is sort of a divide between firefighters and officers who've been there a long time and newer members to the department. How would you go about building that department back to a cohesive group?
I think it goes back to respecting tradition, but also embracing the passing of the torch from generation to generation. I promoted as a young lieutenant years ago, and I was very, I've been blessed to have some great senior firefighters. And you can be, understanding of, you know, if there's somebody who's older than you are and you're trying to supervise them, that can be a little bit of a challenge. But I've found that when you respect their input and you use their input to benefit, you know, the shift of the department, they're almost sometimes taken aback by that. And I think respecting their experience, it means a lot. There's a lot of things in the fire service that are experience-based for a reason, and being able to try to cultivate their knowledge and make sure it's retained and passed on to the next generation, I love that. And making sure the next generation respects older members who have been around for a little while or even retired members. I love when retired members stop at the firehouse for a cup of coffee, because you can hear about, you know, "Oh, this isn't the way we used to do it. We had these challenges, and this is how we dealt with it." But respecting everybody and trying to get the most out of everyone, making sure that the younger people understand the experience that they bring to the table from the older side and that the older side's trying to understand it's their job to turn around and pass the torch to the next generation, pass along your knowledge.
Thank you.
Yeah, Scott, you touched on it. I'd like to hear about the FEMA stuff, that you did the work. Sounds like it was like on a national level. Have you done any emergency management planning for the current department you're in as far as FEMA goes? Have you been involved in any of that stuff?
So if, the FEMA team is based in Beverly. It's primarily composed of people from the fire service from all over New England. So we're part of a system of 28 task forces that are stationed throughout the country. So we'll respond, if a state is overwhelmed, we'll respond, and we won't take over for them, but we can advise them in search and rescue. So it's a challenging environment. Get to experience a lot on the response side, and I can see the real-world impacts of where identifying where your hazards are and how you can mitigate those is huge. It's paramount. In my current community, we've had some flooding incidents and, that we never thought we would have, but we had, you know, September two years ago, it was terrible. And we ended up with swiftwater situations, which we've never had in our community before. So it seems that we're dealing with some very dynamic incidents. I've been lucky to be deployed to several places like Oregon for wildfires and Florida for hurricanes, North Carolina recently for Hurricane Helene. So I've been able to see at the local level what these people go through and how they recover from them. And again, it goes back to some of my education at the college level. I was involved with several projects for a community I was a volunteer firefighter for as far as identifying risks and how to mitigate those. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who's the emergency management director in North Attleboro?
That would be the fire chief.
Yeah.
Do you assist him or work with him on that?
Yes, I do. If he has a particular question, he's also a member of the FEMA team as well. So we worked together a lot for a number of years. I have a background in technology. I love using technology for public safety purposes. So trying to figure out how to track your hazards and how you're going to mitigate those, and especially during, it can be as simple as a very challenging hurricane or a blizzard. Making sure you have an understanding of what's going on in the community, what roads are open, what's closed, and making sure that all the partners involved know what the situation is. Making sure we're all playing on the same sheet of music, if you will.
So if the fire chief in East Bridgewater is the emergency management director, do you see that as a big stretch for you?
Absolutely not. I would very much look forward to doing that. I like working with local community groups and trying to figure out where the needs are and how we can alleviate any, the best emergency that we can respond to is the one that we prevent. I love that, and I want to bring that to the table for you.
Okay. Well, that's all the questions we have. I want to thank you for what you do for the, is the city or town?
Town, yes, sir.
Town and North Attleboro. I was confused with Franklin. And what you do for the Commonwealth and what you do for the federal response for the FEMA one team and for your interest in the position of fire chief in the town of East Bridgewater.
Thank you.
And I'll walk you to the door.
Thank you very much. I very appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, sir, and welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, thank you.
Dave, thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much for your interest in the position of fire chief in the town of East Bridgewater. I have a series of questions to ask you over the next 20 minutes. We want you to answer them completely but succinctly. So if you can answer them in a few words, that's good, but we want you to answer the questions completely, too. So I have a series of questions. If we only get through question one, we didn't get to the other 15, so. And at the end, if we have time, we'll entertain a few questions from the board.
Certainly.
Okay. So I'd like to start the process with you telling us a little bit about yourself and why the East Bridgewater Fire Department and the town of East Bridgewater is a good professional fit for you.
All right, great. Well, as you know, my name's Dave Curya. Been a firefighter for about 29 years. Live in the town of Kingston. I work in the town of Kingston right now. Have a lot of hobbies, mostly family and sports-related. Biggest reason that I think East Bridgewater, the department and the town would be a big fit for me is from the beginning of my career, I've always aspired to be a chief, to run the department, to be a chief. I did a lot of things in Kingston to get ready for it, but unfortunately for me, timing just wasn't right. The chief that's there is pretty much my age. The deputy, who's the next in line, is actually considerably younger than me. So it got to the point where I said, "Do I stay where I am?" Which I was very happy with. I spent, like I said, 27 years there. Or do I want, and the desire to do, to be a chief really started to really become more and more. This opportunity came up. I wasn't one that was just going out and applying for every chief job there were, because I want to make sure, I want to be loyal. I want to stay and do things. East Bridgewater came up, and I looked at it, and it was just kind of like one of those wow moments, because basically it's the same framework that I'm coming from. The department is very, very similar in size, in call volume, in services that they offer. The town, the same way East Bridgewater is, just a hair bigger than Kingston, and I think it's about a half, a mile and a half, excuse me, square miles bigger. Population is about the same. So I looked at the opportunity. I said, "Wow, this is really something that I think I could be a fit in. I'm very comfortable with this type of system." It was just, I think it was the perfect opportunity for me to go past, because like you said, unfortunately, I mean, fortunately for the town of Kingston, they have a great chief. They have a great deputy, but unfortunately for me, it wasn't going to allow me to get to where my goals were.
Okay. What would you say your leadership style is, and why have you chosen that leadership style?
I think honestly, I think I have numerous leadership styles, and let me explain that. You know, I grew up in the fire service with basically the Vietnam era. People were the first ones when I came on, so it was very, very regimented. We kind of lost that a little bit when we didn't have the military. The military came back. But now, as I get older, I look at it, and I mean, there's a time and a place for all of them. I think I can be a democratic leader when need be, because there are situations in the fire service where I feel that, you know, input from everybody is good. I can definitely be an autocratic leader when I have to be. This time, especially, you know, fire ground, it's no, it has to be the way I do it, and this is how we're going to do it. And I can truly, at times, I can be a hands-off leader. I can say, "Okay, this is the task. It has to be done. I have faith in my people. You guys go and get it done." So I think I have a little bit of everything, and I think I have now, with my maturity, I want to call it, in the fire service, I think I have the ability to look and see when which style is going to be appropriate. So I think I really kind of have a little bit of everything.
In a few words, if you had to list one thing you stand for as a leader, what would that be?
I think it's, well, obviously, it's success of the organization. My goal is to be an asset to the organization and to promote success for the organization. And that, I pride myself on being a leader who builds the organization. I'm a big believer in succession planning and mentoring. I want to make everybody better. I want to make the firefighters better. I want to make them better to perform their job, but also to succeed and become officers. The line officers to succeed, become deputy and someday chief. You know, nothing would make me happier than to have somebody that I mentored and I brought along when my career was at the end. I can say, "Here's the next person right here," and I have all the confidence in the world that this is the person. So I think that's where I come from, is just to build success.
What advantages do you see having an open and collaborative relationship with other town departments, you know, within the town and outside agencies?
Oh, I think it's invaluable. That's one of the things I pride myself on in Kingston is I work well with a lot of the other departments, most of them. I do training with them. I'm the EMS coordinator in Kingston, so I do a lot of CPR training throughout the departments to make sure that they have it, school departments, the highway departments. I just think it's really, it's key, because the more we can work together, the better the outcome is for the town. And that's ultimately our responsibility. Yes, as the fire chief, my responsibility is the fire department, but ultimately, it's the town of East Bridgewater and making sure that they get the proper services and what the people deserve.
Okay. What level of involvement have you had in budget creation and budget management?
Quite a bit. Like I said, I've been running the EMS portion of Kingston Fire for 20 years now. And I think everybody's aware that, you know, in the fire service now, that the departments that run EMS, it's probably anywhere from an 80 to, 75 to 85% of our job is EMS. So I run a budget that is now well over $100,000. So I create that. I handle that. And I can say proudly, with the exception of 2020, when COVID hit us, and it hit us kind of hard, I have never had to go and ask for more money. I've been able to manage and provide what I feel is an excellent service within my budget. So I am very adept at scheduling, at budgeting for training, budgeting for equipment, things like that. So I feel very comfortable in the budgeting process, and I think I've had quite a bit with it. It's the biggest budget that we have other than personnel in the fire department.
Okay. You talk about budget, you talk about equipment. The fire service, you know, fire apparatus is very unique. How important do you see it to have a multi-year capital plan for the fire department?
Oh, I think it's incredible, especially, I mean, nowadays, it's a little different also because we have longer order time, manufacturer time. But I think that the capital plan is very important, again, not only for the fire department, to make sure that we have the proper equipment, but to work along with the town to make sure that we have a good relationship. We can say, "Okay, not every department this year needs significant equipment. We can manage it that way." And I think the capital plan is a great way so that we can prioritize what we're going to need, how we're going to need it, things like that, and work well with the other people in the town also.
So how far do you think that capital plan needs to look out?
I would say, honestly, my opinion, my thought, is a minimum of 10 years.
And the wait time for ambulances now and fire apparatus?
Well, it depends on who you speak to, because now where we are pushing, that we're approaching on, for an engine, we're looking at three to four years. Most of the manufacturers now are putting it days. I guess maybe they feel that that makes it seem like it's less time. But we are unfortunately looking at three to four years, probably closer to two and a half to three years for an ambulance.
What experience have you had in fire prevention and code enforcement?
Again, because of the fact that I want to be an asset to the department, I really took a part in a lot of things. I am a certified fire prevention officer, one and two. I have done a lot of commercial in town. We had a boom a few years ago with our mall, so what the chief had done is he basically gave every captain a major commercial project, so we were in charge of that. And on a regular basis, the shift took care of residential things like smoke detectors, resales, carbon monoxide tests like that. So I have quite a bit, and to go along with that quite a bit, we also, ours is hand-in-hand with our fire education, our public education also, so quite a bit of that.
Okay. This question may sound a little bit redundant, but I want you to expound on it a little bit. Your experience with fire-based EMS transport systems?
I have to be honest, it's really, I had a very short career in the private service, so most of my, almost like you say, July will be 29 years I've been in the fire service. For 29 years, it's been fire-based EMS. So I feel I'm very, very comfortable with it. I have a good working relationship with most of the hospitals in this area. Dr. Musa DeBarrocton, it was Dr. Tenerowicz at the BI in Plymouth, but he's leaving, so I have a lot to do with that. I've been very active with Region Five, which is the OEMS region that we have here. So I'm very comfortable and very experienced with the systems.
And you run an ALS transport system?
Yes, yes, sir. Three ALS ambulances right now and an ALS engine.
Do you have any experience in writing and obtaining grants?
Honestly, not as much as I would like, but I have been involved in five EMS grants, and I have helped with three of our AFG grants in the past, in the recent past.
And have they been successful?
They have been very successful.
And what were the AFG grants?
We've got new SCBAs. We've got new turnout gear for all the firefighters. And then to pigtail onto that, we went with new brush gear for all of the And then to pigtail, pigtail onto that, we went with new brush gear for all of the, so we did one year, we did turnout gear. One year, we did brush gear.
The firefighters have two sets of gear, or just one?
Two sets of gear and one set of brush gear.
East Bridgewater Fire does not have a full-time training officer? And, you know, training is always a concern, especially with the smaller departments, you know, similar to your department. It's, it's hard to take a company out of service just to train them. So how would you institute a, a training program for the town of East Bridgewater?
Well, again, one of the nice things I liked about this is I'm coming into the same framework, so it's really not, I, I wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. Kingston, it's the same way. It's very hard. We have a six-person shift when we're at full. It's hard to take somebody out of service. So we created a plan that does a lot of on-duty training, but training that still keeps the majority of the shift in service, so that we may have to say, okay, I need to leave two people back to just clean this up, but we still have plenty of help to respond to the calls. So we have a, a very big in-service training thing that we have. I'd like to, you know, obviously, look at it down the road, see if there was a, a way that we could maybe do a monthly drill with the department. We used to do that in Kingston. Unfortunately, when COVID came, a lot of those things stopped, and we haven't brought it back yet. But just maybe a monthly drill that we can bring more people off-duty to get it. But I do have a lot of ideas. I've been a fire service instructor since 2001. I've worked for the Mass Fire Academy. I had a stint in 2009, but I had to leave. I've been back since 2022. So I work with all of the new recruits. I work in the fire officer program. So I have a lot of ideas on things that we can do to bring our level of training to a, a higher level, but still keep it within the boundaries of being able to stay in service and work that way.
Okay. Retention and recruitment is, is very difficult in, in the fire service. East Bridgewater's no different. You know, firefighter medics are, you know, shopping around. How would you create an environment to, to put an end to that, or at least try to keep the firefighter medics?
Unfortunately, I don't, it, it's a, it's a service-wide thing. I don't think it's going to be fixed overnight. But the way I look at it, usually, there's one of two reasons why we're not retaining our people. They always, unfortunately, pardon me, but they get the grass is greener on the other side scope. And it's usually, A, because of contractual issue, or B, because of a cultural issue. I don't really feel that East Bridgewater has a contractual issue. I've been privy to see the contract, and I think it's actually a very decent contract. So I think it's a little bit of a cultural issue. And the big thing is, and it's not just to East Bridgewater, but we've lost a lot of camaraderie in the fire service. We've lost a lot of the togetherness. I'm a big believer, like I said, in succession planning and mentoring. So I really want to make everybody, I want to bring back the, for lack of better terms, the family feel that, you know, we can sit down as a group and have a dinner together when we're working, instead of one person in one room, one person in another room. I, I kind of equate it to like my teenagers. That's what happened. Everybody scattered. But just bring back that family, get to know everybody, make everybody feel that this is their fire department, so that they won't look somewhere else and say, well, these people over at XYZ get treated better, so the grass is greener there. Bring that back here. Let them know that, you know, the department is vested in them. We want them to be vested in the department. We want to keep them here. Again, by mentoring, so that I can, you know, me, the other officers can share whatever we have, experience, knowledge, to them, to make them better. Knowing that, you know, this, we're doing this, so that they can build up, and they can say, okay, you know, you might be a firefighter with a year on the job, but we're going to work with you, so that when the first chance comes to be a lieutenant, you might have a good shot at that. The lieutenants, let them know that, you know, when the captain spot comes up, we can do that. But basically, just that, to bring the camaraderie back, bring the, the sense of family back to the department, make everybody feel included and feel that it's their department.
Okay. This is a situational question, so I only need one experience. Sure professional experience you've had with a difficult employee that worked for you, or that you supervised, how you handled it, and what was the outcome for the employee and the department?
Had a few. I, I guess probably the biggest one, because it unfortunately was a recurring issue. We had a firefighter who had a substance problem, and, you know, it, at first, didn't affect this person's job performance, but it started to affect their relationships with everybody else. So I had to bring him in. First time I did it, I did it very informally, and I said, you know, hey, listen, I know what's going on. Let's talk about what we can get you for help. Let's see which road we can follow. Thought we were going in the right direction, but unfortunately, he just did a really good job at hiding it again from us when he was there. It reared its head again, so we got it. And this time, I was able, I, I had to take a more firm stance, and I had to say, listen, now it's starting to affect things. I had everything that was offered. I, I found out all the assistance that was offered, and I said, you know, I think this is the path we need to choose. I'm not really giving you a choice, but we're going to choose this path. We got him helped. He came back. Him and I are very tight now, and he's a, a very productive part of our group now. So I, I think that's probably the biggest one.
Okay, thank you. If I was to call you chief, what type of employee would you say you would?
I think he would tell you pretty much what I told you. I, I try to do what's best for the town, and what's best for the department. Try to make myself available to everybody whenever I can. You know, I, I do a lot, like you said, do the EMS, so when it comes this time of year, when it's recertification time, I'm always answering my phone. I'm always there. If he needs something, I'll, I'll do everything I can to, to get what he needs, you know, to accomplish his task. I'm very goal-oriented, but I'm also very department-oriented. I, I don't do it so that somebody can say, oh, he did this. I, I don't want the credit. I want the, the team to do it. I want the department to do it. I want to make Kingston Fire look better, and I would want the same thing here. I, I wouldn't want someone to say, oh, just, chief is the best, he did this. I want the East Bridgewater Fire Department. Yes, I, I do strongly feel the chief is the face of the East Bridgewater Fire Department, or whatever fire department, but I want it to be the whole thing. And I think I, my chief would tell you that, too, that I can honestly tell you, unfortunately, it just happened recently, but for the first time in my career, I had to call in sick, so I, I don't miss a lot of work. I have been injured a couple of times, missed some work, but I don't, I don't call in sick. I give 100% when I'm there all the time. And I think he would tell you that exact same thing.
Okay. So we've had many interested and will, and extremely well-qualified applicants apply for this position, you being one of those. Tell us why the town of East Bridgewater should hire you as their next chief?
Well, as I said, I, I think the nice thing is, I, I could fit right into the framework, and for lack of better terms, hit the ground running. But I, I think I bring a well-rounded leader to the department. I have academic training, you know, I've gotten college degrees. I have a lot of hands-on practical training. I have the ability, I've been an instructor for years, and I think if you called anybody at the instructor, at the academy, I think they would tell you the same thing. I'm very well-received there, because I want to share what I have, you know. So I, I think I bring that ability. I think I have the ability to, to see what, what this job is. I mean, I've been through a lot of different phases. Being at the academy, I think it helps me with the new generation, because I think, and I don't mean this in a negative, but the younger kids are a different generation. They, they have different thoughts, different beliefs. But working with them, I think I have a good grasp on how they are. I think my communication skills are, are good. I can get along with everybody. And I, I don't think that I have enough of it that it has to be my way or the highway type attitude. And I'm more than willing to listen to people. I, I want to help everybody. I want to make them better, because again, even though the chief is the face of the department, you're only as good as your weakest link. So I don't want there to be a weakest link. I want to build everybody up. And I, I just think I bring that ability. Again, with East Bridgewater, I have the, the luxury of saying that with, with the exception of CERT, I will be very honest, because I've never really had a lot of involvement with the CERT team, which I'm very interested to learn about. I'm, I'm eager to learn about that. But as far as all the other services, EMS, fire suppression, tech rescue, pub ed, I've, I've been running our pub ed program for probably the last 15 years. I've been running the EMS for 20 years. So I think I bring a lot that I can offer to help make a really good department here even better.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Chief?
Retention, is that the same down there as it is in Kingston, as it is here? It's very difficult to keep these young people?
Unfortunately, I think it's like, I say, for lack of better terms, I think it's an industry problem. I, I think, you know, with the help of our chief and the offices, I, I, we really buy into the succession and the mentoring program. So I think we're really trying to make everybody feel that they're a part of it. And I, I think there's, the newer kids especially, they're coming out, because I, I have the advantage of spending a lot of time with the kids at recruit school, and then back at the station. So we're trying to really make them feel that they're part of the department. And then, we let them know that we're interested in them, and we want to make sure that they grow. So I think we've been a little, I think we're a little ahead of the curve right now, but it, it's an issue everywhere, unfortunately. Because like I say, a lot of people get the, the grass is greener syndrome, and they look, and they say, well, you know, I hear from this person, and they say this, and I hear from that person, and they say this, so that's where I want to go, or that's where I want to go. But I, I think it's, I, I do think it's a problem that, it's not an overnight fix, but I think it is an easy fix, to be honest with you, just by bringing that pride and that ownership into the department.
Okay. The grant writing that you were talking about, I know you said you wish you had done some more of it. The process when you were involved in the grant writing, were you the narrative writer of this, or were you a part of a team, or how did that go?
We, we did a lot as a team, so I, I was, depending on my subject matter expertise, I would have input into the narrative. We'd put it all together, we'd proofread it, and then, you know, we'd all, this is a network of this. We'd always ask other chiefs to look at it, other deputies, other people that have written grants. So, so I, I can't say that I was ever the lead as the narrative writer, but I did have an integral part in it.
Okay. All right, thanks.
You talked a lot about the similarities between Kingston and East Bridgewater. Do you see any disadvantages to that, or do you think that's just really just a positive
I, I think it's really, honestly, I think it's a, a real positive, because it's not as though I'm coming from a real small department, and I have to get used to having more people. I really know the pros and cons to working the way we have it, to really put out a successful product. I mean, I, I don't mean to sound negative when I say that there's probably no perfect. There's no, but, you know, we're going to have pros, hopefully more than we're going to have cons. But I think coming from a similar department, it really gives me the advantage to say, hey, I understand this. I know exactly what these guys are feeling. I know how they're, you know, when they've been on all these calls, I know what's going on. And I have some ideas on how we can fix that, how we can rotate it, whatever the, the situation has to be. But I think it's more of an advantage than anything.
Yeah, Dave, I, so I'm a big supporter of, of the community, you know, working with the community, whether it be the schools, the town, what have you. You know, I, I did, hey, you mentioned that, you know, you've been involved in youth sports and whatnot, which I think is great, because, you know, youth is, is extremely important to any occupation, and getting these kids involved. But my question's more about, so the town of East Bridgewater is looking into, they have a committee right now for a new safety building. You know, we hope to have that in front of us here, in whoever sits in, in that position, in their tenure. Have you been involved in any, any projects, and it doesn't have to be regarding like buildings, what, other projects outside of the fire department in the town of, of Kingston, that, you know, might, might give you some experience dealing with the public in, in a different avenue than, than in the fire department?
Well, not to the extent of like a public service building-type project, but, so in Kingston, we have a, a holiday festival called the Luminary. They do, they shut down Main Street, they do the lights and everything. I ran that for 18 years, so that was with other departments, committees, citizen committees, things like that. So I've had that. Again, the EMS, I implemented a, a town AED program. I, one of the grants that I got was actually for AEDs. So we put them in all of the town buildings, the sports complexes. So I, I coordinated with all the, the athletics, the sports teams, things like that, to get that program up and running. So, things like that.
All right, that makes sense. And last is, is a question more for, for me personally. Any connections at Indian Pond that I can get out there?
Once in a great while, they'll actually let us sneak on, but we have to behave.
Could you cut that out?
I've only played it twice.
All right, it's one of my favorite, yeah.
Charlie, any question? Any more from the board?
No, thanks, Jeff.
Dave, thank you very much. Thank you for your interest.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you for what you do in Kingston, for the Commonwealth, and great job you do at the Mass Fire Academy.
It's actually, you know, it, it sounds very cliche, but that's, that's like a passion at some. I mean, they pay me, I'm not going to lie to anybody, but I really enjoy it. I mean, I've always enjoyed teaching, so.
Thank you for your interest in this position.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.